Very, very good. So the first slide is on the agenda is presentation regarding our audit report. Ms. Clutz, you would be the speaker.
Yes, sir. We have, we're just like, I'm actually trying to ask for an audit this way. I forget who it is, who does the audit. This came in previously, doesn't have a power of up for you. It's just finding, and that's why I was finding, so it's a new day. And he's on the same page as you, Mr. Carrington.
Yes. I'm here, Williams, with HHMC today. Thank y'all for having us again to do the audit. Always enjoy coming out here, working with Jess and her team. So, I'm trying to take the financials, cover it some pages, convince it to something more manageable. So, the first couple of slides will go over the required communications, pretty standard stuff. And then highlights some of the bigger items, bigger areas. First of all, our audit opinion, because it's unamortified, it's a good clean opinion, which is what we always want to see. Our responsibility is to perform the audit according to general, generally accepted auditing standards. And there were auditing standards, which essentially means we're trying to obtain reasonable assurance that the financials are free material statements. Because we don't look at every single transaction, there's always the possibility that one could be there, but that is the goal of the audit. As part of the audit, we are required to be compliant with S. We are required to be independent of the city of Aniston. The whole engagement team was independent of the city. The planned scope of timing of audit, that is all outlined in the engagement letter. We try to perform audit within that scope and timing. Significant accounting policies, those are all discussed in note one. Financials, there's a lot of those. The main thing that changed this year was Gatsby 96, which is related to subscription-based IT arrangements. Now, being capitalized, if they need certain requirements, we evaluate that. And there wasn't any material changes related to it, so that didn't really affect the city. And the accounting estimates, we evaluate management assessments, make sure they're reasonable. The main estimates, pension, overhead, and then depreciation for capital assets. Management accounting staff, like I said, we always enjoy working with Jess and her team. They do a great job. This was probably the easiest for us as far as banking entries and preference selling stuff. We didn't really have any issues, so it's all we can get. Next page, consultants and other accountants. Weren't aware of any other accountants, consultants being used. Corrected and corrected statements. We made some entries related to capital assets and adjusting interfront balances. But that wasn't really a lot of adjustments. Deficiencies and internal control compliance. We did not note any deficiencies in internal controls. Fraud on the legal acts, we didn't become aware of any fraudulent activities or any illegal activities going on. So that's always nice. Difficulties, errors, we didn't have any during the audit. The representation letter, we have certain representations from management, and those are all outlined in the management record that we did. No significant matters discussed and no findings. Go over some of the financial highlights. Look at the government funds. Some things noted, general fund, total assets 32 million. For up to 23 of that is cash and investments, so it's good, good amount of assets to be used. And then on the liability side, 12.5 million. So I've noted that 9.7 of that is just money held for ARPA funds, so no other big liabilities. Debt service fund, most of that is cash available. And then the liabilities on the debt service fund are mostly due to the general fund. So, the ARPA fund, the assets are grant funds used for projects. And all of that is diverted until it's spent. At that point, it is then earned, so zero foot amounts. Nothing major on the capital projects. The non-major funds, there's a lot of stuff that goes into that, but I won't begin to go through that. There's 27 funds that are put in there, so that's all included in the other supplementary information in the financials if you would like to dig deep into that. Next slide, we go with the changes in these government funds for the this speaker, point three. Something to note, general fund had a positive, 6.5 million changes this year, which looks good. Debt service fund, most of the expenditures, 2.8 million was used on principal and interest. 3.9 was transfers to other funds. Yeah, no others significant, obviously, there. The next slide goes over the budgetary highlights from the general fund, because this is the main fund of the city. One thing, you can kind of see all the major departments, official, that we'll say, the corporate works, general government. The main thing to note here is the total revenues and the positive variance between final budget numbers and actual numbers. The revenue exceeded what we anticipate to collect, which is good. And then total expenditures, actual numbers was below final budgeted numbers, which is also good. City staying within budgeted amounts, which is also what we like to see. So overall, the general fund did really well when you compare budget to actual, for this speaker, point three. Next slide, kind of just looking at general fund balance compared to expenditures of the year. Just to kind of see, is it in good shape, is it kind of low, is it kind of hot? General fund balance, as of year end, had 20 million in it. Total expenditures for 47 million. So, if you compare that to your expenditures for the year in months, you'd have roughly five months' worth of funds available to keep performing operations. So, that's a good fund balance. We have no issues with that. Everything looks in order there. This last slide is the single audits of some years you had a single audit and we don't. It all depends on how much federal funds you expend during the year. And this year, we all met that requirement. One thing to note is there were no material weaknesses identified during our evaluation of that. No significant deficiencies were noted. We also had a clean opinion on the single audit base of this engagement, and no findings were noted. We evaluated the ARPA grant program during this testing. But overall, the single audit went really well, so no issues with that. That's legit. Overall, it was a really good audit and had any issues? Enjoyed it. You have any questions?
Have you got any issues or questions to mention?
I think this is a good time to just come in and ask finance department for the job they've done. There's nothing found, and they cooperated, and it's been very smooth. So I just suggest in the team, please let us know, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Very much so. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big trouble.
Thank you. Let's concede your question. We did have a presentation night, I'd like you to just edit terms, your manager, but... Your mayor can answer what works with me. So, would you like to talk to us about the need for the water tower?
Yeah.
And out here, Mary, if you're sorry to put that down now. Oh, I'm trying to get away. I'll walk over there. I'll walk down there. And I've got some other, perfectly brought one for you, sir. It's almost four. It's still, it's almost 10:00. Okay. Here's the estimate regarding the tank. And I was trying to go over our project. So quite a few years ago, this project brought our attention. The property at Combs Hill, which is that hill right there behind Lowe's, it has been given to us as long as we put a water tank up there by the EDA. So we had an agreement for that. We also have an agreement with the EDA for this to contribute to this project. With that being said, we decided to proceed with the design portion of this, which on that, on breakdown of the tank project cost, you can see it's about $2 million just for the tank itself. Two and a half for the transmission we need to feed it. And some modifications to the bush pump station, which is already in place. That savings amount there, I think it's only about $300,000 modification. And then with the engineering, the construction administration, you're looking at another $150,000 project. But total project cost is around $5 million. Now, what does this project do? This project will supply the water to some of the higher elevations around Combs Hill. Allow that to be built. Also allow some projects along these western bypass, eastern bypass to be served, which they would never be served, as it tends now. They'd be those of them that we think, because there's no water on it there. And there were something built there, elevation should not be affected. So, that being said, I've had to positive feedback from the EDA, from the county commissions. They looked into possibly trying to contribute on this too. Everybody in the county in this area has been positive about this project, because it is probably the best way of developing the community. So, if the council has any queries, I would like to answer anything about that. I do think that Volta Pay for Laclle will be put to the size of that she's contributed. That part of the one, this is absolutely assessing. And I will say, we're continuing to work our federal partners for the respect of funding. Can you speak to the technical timeline for funding? This is not something you got $5 million tomorrow. And I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor. As I said, it's now, the design, the design work has been completed. So that's paid for by the Aniston Water Works. And there would be permits that we'd have to get from Alda to do this. That may take a little time. And then once that is acquired, you would go out and bid. So you're looking at probably a two-year project. So this money would not be needing all the funding. It would be one of those sort of, well, we'll probably fund up the money and then just be reimbursed within the front of the other partners. But it would be at the much continued project. And again, as I said, we work particularly Brit's office and Ryder's office. And that's something that Ed and Seth will continue to work with as far as providing, you know, the information that they was getting. Got, and again, I think that Laclle is never going to develop in a manner that we wanted to develop without the existing state, and that's why, again, we continue to be impressed on our federal partners. Not only the need for this, but the expedience of the efficiencies and the rights.
That was my question. So, I don't have that face, because I have my struggles. But we're talking two years of hearing this for something that maybe when I first heard about this, my first conversation was talking about the water timeline, where it was saying like the wood issue. It should have been a little run up, you know? It would be true if one is, that part of the cloud. And I think this is just another testament of certain entities ragging their feet and just coughing, trying to be able to grow. Outside of DLT, there ain't any way to improve, and it'll be timing.
Once agreed to fund this, it's reached, my board is ready to take the first step forward and advertise. And bid lottery, if you go to advertise six weeks, if I'm not mistaken. I believe that's that correct, Bruce?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Well, we'll say it's three. It's three, but that may have changed some with the...
Street protect, it was. Well, this is how it works, bid lottery.
Yes. And so, and you have to go to, it used to be 3D newspapers. I'm not even sure if that's still the same or not.
Yeah, application now, you do it online, because nobody uses newspapers.
Well, I mean, there was, there was many disagreements, right? There were, there were some there.
At least from there.
Yeah.
I still do.
So, once we go out and bid, it didn't matter what order it would be hit and do the reconstruction needs. And that, that all just takes time.
Yeah.
As you possibly know, with courthouse renovations, you know.
It takes...
It kind of...
Takes three to four weeks to bid it. It takes another three to four weeks to get contracts, bonds, and insurance and everything in place before you can start it. I see really two months from the day they advertise it to the day that realistically somebody could put a shovel on it.
And then kind of an example of a similar project, the well retain project that will be driven down to to send the new water tank there. That was over a year by now, and probably will get finished in the year this year. But now, we also had delays in materials at that point in time. I don't know what kind of relation the deal could have had.
Yeah, that's consistent.
Yes, sir. Any additional comments or questions? Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Okay. Next slide I want to do is a street rename. This, this request was filtered through IT City. And it's regarding the name ITC Delta Conway, which is no longer there. It is actually a changer and dresser now. Now, I'll, I'll read to you the request. The request is to change the name to Cassano. To Cassano Way. And we'll read this here from now on, from IT City. Kazu Cassano is the person who is helping honor the renaming of IT City Way. He established Changer and Dresser in 2001 here in Aniston and moved to the current location in 2007. They are anticipating building their third building soon. And they're hoping everything goes well. They will have their local meeting, Changer and Dresser local meeting here in Aniston in 2025. That will bring in Volta, Thailand, Germany, Japan, China, Korea, India, and Mexico. So, it's really just honoring the owner of Changer and Dresser. Again, ITC is no longer there. So, and I have other staff that's with that.
Yes, sir. And that's where we researched this. And I remember before, that's when we came up with these, I already named it up, bro. Because it's a tedious process, because you have to go, they have to go from 9-1-1 first or then post office. But again, keep in mind, the council has something in place where they can actually do that if longer than this week. And like a memorial type thing can be done right away.
Okay.
So, I would like to discuss that, because there's nothing else on that. We can change that sign, and then once you all approve it, the sign can change up. But this other process, we're talking about long.
This is one, Arch. Yes, sir. Do you want Jason to speak to that?
That's what we were talking about that, though. So that's what we're talking, filling it out, while we get that through out. Talking, you know, talking with Mr. Harper and have, see if they do with that, just like we did behind the park. Temple Roberts Way, where we can actually go in there and redo that really quicker, quite a lot quicker. And have to go through this, this other thing. Because that's, J, Councilman Jenkins, Councilman Harris was here. We went through this before, and that's why Ryan came up with that, that process, because of the whole process forever and ever and ever.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is everybody able to assess the process, make this? So, this, this meeting that they're talking about, not taking place until the spring, I should be honest. So, time is not really the essence, but, you know, we can put this on soon, subsequent agenda. Go and take care of that.
We're, they're gonna have a sign already, you know, when we're gonna get rid of it. But if you go, we can get the sign up real quick. And it's already there, we're not going to throw it up anymore.
We might put that on our next agenda, the first one that we're gonna do.
Yes, sir.
There might go to that.
I think the next thing, I think we don't have, you know, one, we have no meeting, we're not making a meeting. Just the second.
Is there any question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
You all are on the home floor.
Yes, sir. Any, any additional discussion, questions, and as to renaming the ITC Conway? Okay. Let's move on to item three, current applications.
Yes, sir. This is one, one was already done, and we all went through a thing, just finally approved. This is the grant for the airport master plan. And that's what's been, it's already been approved for $304,670. And there was a state match and a city match, which brings about $332,553, which is in the back. But that's already been approved, and we all lose for seven to five paperwork there.
Everybody get that? Any issues with that? All right, let's move on to item four, with these, our license applications, both a good subject. A couple of hearings tonight and will be on the consent agenda. The first one would be for Class 1 license, Pacific Service Level C, DEA, E, VS, Jazz Arrows, and 1100 South Wind Tar. And the other one would be one of the routine, especially in recent license for the Jazz Arrows. We know each, know each precaution there, again, again, those would be the subject of a couple of hearings on item, the consent agenda.
I will be making my, my own remarks about, you have a man, but it's like you got a bunch of holes. And you know, there were a little for one.
Yes, sir. Exactly. Okay. Next slide, I have five bids for one for Police Department, one for Miami and Nebraska, and one for renovation of my center of farms for a town that are being specific and all that. It's pretty simple plans.
So, I can, I can talk, I would ask, be...
Can I just point out what the scope of these is?
For my turn.
Yeah.
It is...
I mean, we got that to ourselves right now.
But all goes down from the roof, so man, sticking inside, the roof is gonna be done. All of the fixtures is gonna be changed out, and then they're gonna also put some concrete work to that side.
So, it's roof, changing the fixtures, and cost matching improves. I'm sure inside and outside, it's a good, etc. Okay. If obviously, Chris has been in the silence. Correct.
Really, man, keep it with that. Every, who really be doing the all the crap, everything, man, from doing the showers or the shower. And now, I'm being successful by everybody. Only people be successful to the showers, if you actually rent those places. We're actually gonna have a way where you can cove in and put it out. We're gonna make sure it's, you can't just go in and stand and get up right now. When I come in there, somebody walking out with a towel, with a towel on the head, using the shadows. We're just trying to make it slow, because it's a lot, it's a lot of place cameras at this. We're just trying to make it, when we open it up, that people feel safe out there, and they... That's really good.
And that these two are receiving, at least the, the, the form.
Both of them, yes.
Yeah, and my turn. Back to the question. Any, any additional questions inside of five? Okay, item six, this pay class action, one bit two, it's on the consent date tonight. So I'll turn it over to you, or receive over, whoever you'd like to progress this.
Yes, sir. This is, so, I ran back and Coach Chief is here. She came to HR to talk about this. This is just a position that will be assisted to that supply train centers moving quickly and going way more, much more, gives them a system. But this would happen, it also allows this person that is hired to be a salary worker instead of a hour, hour workers about overtime. So this would be more efficient and be cost effective to the city when you go to go use this. And that's what we're gonna change this, so just redo this, so we don't have to pay the council solid work. Did I say that correctly?
Okay. Any, any issues and or questions to ask? That's, that's the pay class action. All right, Ms. Clutz, I'll turn it over to you for updates. I know we got a couple of things we'll need to address that this time of year has relates to the, the letter of intent from the mayor, and also the issue we need to resolve.
Yes, possible. We sort of got ourselves in a situation on, and I said, you all got a copy of the papers. And I hope you had a chance to look at it, puts on 15th Street and Glen Addy and 15th. Right there, you know, where they built the, there's a, the tax stand, a building that's there, the parking lot that's adjacent to it. And then at the parking lot, bust that parking lot there is a alleyway that goes there that, that's been there. But what we found out after the survey was done by the owner, the owner of the building, he found out that where the, where the alleyway was, was not our rightway. It was actually his property. So we petitioned to put the fence there, was in the internal blocks of our way, so we can't get back there, because somebody can't get their driver or anything else. After we researched the public works, we're going to engineer, we found our piece correct. We cannot stop the building there. So we found that our rightway is really the grass area. So what we looked at in order to remedy this, and I've talked with Councilman Roberts for this area, and we've had this conversation, but it's become a balance between truth and it's one of those things that we got to fix for some citizens that are gonna be affected by it. So we figured out that we can actually place them, that we do the alleyway on the right, on our rightway, but it's gonna cost about $13,000. We have those funds available, and I just need the council not to go and move forward. We've already got an estimate, we've already, but it's causing a big, 15 street is really, it's already down there. So we, but we got to do something. And that's the quickest way we can fix it. Graveling it is not gonna fix it, because if we gravel it, we still, you're talking about getting some... And we better just only do one time, so if we gravel, we have to come back, you know, figure out if we do it this way, we already got somebody in place, it's a public works project that we would, does not have to be bid, we could move forward with this right away if that council is dealing with that.
Everybody get that, so like this?
Because the other thing is, I gave you all the copy, and I think some of you are aware of this, that the Deadville, Mom Vipers, that Niba's, has been really in Apple for quite some time. It's really, really a big event. And they've come down, it's not one, they're not qualified in the southeast. But I've been doing some work, I have rare starting meeting with the Niba, and I have a couple meetings with Niba. They got, they've come down, they really like it, just how we would compete with three other, three other cities in my area.
There's kind of number six initial, Chad, and it was in there, several across southeast. Two points for us in Roanoke, Virginia. And we'd be down with them, no.
So we have, I think, for making this announcement, so they're gonna select us, because they're coming in with a middle letter from us. And the middle letter, if they're coming in, want to be committed for three years. The middle letter is just actually by, from the mayor, council approval, that we just be doing for commit to in-count services on the way. This will be in conjunction with the fat tire that we do every year. So we already doing in-count. There's no monetary, uh, commitment to asking for this. It's no different than what we do for the fat tire, or for the Nova Street Festival, or anything else. But all we think about, they need something to make sure that we all end on this. I'm talking with Fox and Aggression, I've all talked to Marcus. You know, there's been some monies that they're giving for those trail that's already in, already in the co-fers that, the community foundation office out of there. Everything needs to be done, can be done to make this happen. It's just to talk about in-count, y'all, y'all see the in-count that asks for. That's nothing new different than we already do with fat tire fast. So, my question is that we like, we'd like to do, since this is one of the things that's ongoing, is that, as we should do a, add to the agenda tonight, a, a motion for the mayor to actually do this letter, so we can get it sent out, so they can make an announcement, and we'd like to make an announcement with that. So that's the council.
Yeah, I don't worry about that, bro. Yeah, I would just say, this is, this is a huge way in for... Yeah, I would just say this is a huge win for the city of Anderson. This is international mountain bike race that these qualifiers occur. It's a bad.
That mountain bike race is probably, it's like doing the Boston America, you have to qualify. But I know qualifiers, and not just the mountain bike race. They also live up one hundred foot race, trail race. And it'll be a qualifier for the mountain race one day, the trail race the next day. They're looking at anywhere, by the year three, you have anywhere from one thousand to fifteen hundred participants of each event. So you're talking two to three thousand spectator, participants and spectators. You're talking four million dollar European impact, right? It's huge, right?
And I mean, as you said, we're not already squarely on the map. This is absolutely.
It's absolutely.
It's just me. I don't know about that now that I have a map, but the research is, this is a big thing.
And part of how we got this good is that it's been three years of the process. But to put on a large event like this, the, I mean, the Niva has done the Jolly Challenge, which is a qualifier for the world championships. And then the Aspen Riders Club has put on six national championship, that back K. And we're used to putting on large events. And the support of the city, the community. And there is some incentive funding. The county's putting up money, Chamber of Commerce putting up money, both clubs are putting up money. And we do have a commitment letter coming from another participant, so we naming lights. So it's a big deal.
No, and we appreciate the Niva's efforts with respect to this and life trust. We, it's essentially the same, the fat tire and Noble Street, both of which are multi-year commitments as well. So is everybody good with what would be specifically would be a motion for council authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent to lifetime of this pledge of the city's investment in council for the lead little mountain bike race and trail running qualifier for three-year period beginning in June twenty twenty-five? Is everybody able to just add to that as to the last part of the consent?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
And one other thing? This is Dr. You.
You're reading it? Dr. But anyway, this is.
You know? Okay. Same thing.
Okay. Now, Bruce, if you can address the issue that we're going to need to take care of tonight on the brand of our reversionary interest with respect to the. How do you check on those? If you can address that with us, we need to take that up tonight. Who will need to sustain those? And having a success for me in this direction, for a senior council officer.
Yes, sir. I received a call from the attorney for the hospital that managed this refinancing. I'm sure you all remember we amended the articles to allow them to mortgage the property. In doing so, when we said that they could mortgage, that meant that our interests were going to be secondary to the mortgage deed. So we've already authorized that. When they were doing their final run through to get the funding in place, the title insurer identified certain deeds from the city, the hospital, going back many years, that reference our reversionary interest in the property. And the title insurer wanted the city to adopt a specific ordinance acknowledging that our reversionary rights are secondary to the lenders. In my opinion, we've already done that. So I don't see this as doing anything new. We already are in a secondary position once the loan is granted. But this is something the lender needs. We've been told this is the last thing the lender needs. And that once they get this final thing from the city, that the loan will be funded. And if we do this tonight, the loan will be funded tomorrow. So it's just an ordinance to acknowledge that our reversionary interest in the hospital's properties are secondary to the lenders' interest. Which again, I think is really something we've already done. That's, that's just.
Any, any issues or questions?
Go ahead. So basically, you're saying we're doing the production.
I think it is personally. But I'm not, you know, for whatever reason, the title insurer wants this piece in place. It's just, you know, better safe than sorry for them. So.
So we're, we're, we'll be in a worse position.
I don't, I believe we're in the same position after you approve this ordinance as you are already, which is the city's interest in the hospital. What's that?
Can't do no better.
Where, if they get the loan, which we've already got on us.
Right.
And then they're going to mortgage the property. And we cannot take that property so long as the mortgage is outstanding.
Right.
So we're already secondary. And this is just kind of acknowledging that we are already secondary with respect to any deeds out there which we have a reversionary interest.
And you also need this to be a straw. This is.
It came to this last.
This is it.
They, the city guy that was just here told us that this is the last thing they need. They were, they don't, it kind of caught them off guard that they needed us. But this is the last thing they need. And the lawyer told me that the loan will be funded tomorrow, which is not a moment too soon, given that the refinancing is supposed to take place today. So that's why they're asking us to do this tonight.
All right.
You basically have to have some of the logs on it. If anybody.
I, I, I would say that I don't see any harm.
You don't.
And we could argue about whether or not it's necessary, but we're not going to, at the end of the day, the title insurer says they need it, they're going to acquire. So we could delay the financing, which could cause problems. But.
I thought I'm a rookie. You thought I'm a rookie.
Yeah. We've already, we've already said that they can find this.
That we want, this one, hopefully, this is the last, last thing. That's all, that's all.
That's what we're told. Stay at that.
So if everybody good, one with suspended rules, bringing him to consent personally tonight. And also it's a paper of these, which quickly by title.
It, it, no. I don't agree with that.
Bruce just said it out very well and it's succinctly as any. Any, any thing? All right, let's stand here for a cloud.